Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our council meeting on this April 21st, Tuesday, our first council meeting without an audience in the public and our first council meeting with Facebook Live. So, all of you viewers out there that are watching via Facebook Live, if you could hit that like button or let us know that you're watching by leaving us a comment if you're catching this on a replay, make sure you hit hashtag replay, we would appreciate it very much. We are going to start our meeting with a pledge of allegiance and followed by a moment of silence. In our moment of silence, I would just ask everyone to take a moment and pray for our country, pray for those that are suffering with the virus, pray for those who are on the front lines, pray for patients, pray for patients. We're going to all go through a rough time still, we have a little bit more to go, we just need to dig in, hang on, and we will get through this. So, with that, we will start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Jackie, can you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Velardo?
Here.
Vice Mayor Evans?
Here.
Ms. Russell?
Here.
Mr. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Redmond?
Here.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Here.
Mr. Haskins?
Here.
Thank you. So, we're going to start our committee or our council meeting with a presentation from our police department and our police chief, Jamie Mills. For those of you again in Facebook Live, if you want to leave comments, questions throughout this presentation, feel free to do so, we've got several people here that are scrolling, checking your comments. There is a section on the agenda for public comments and we will try to get through all the questions and comments at that time. So, at this time, I will turn it over to Chief Mills.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. Thank you for the opportunity to present the 2019 Milford Police Department Annual Report. The report serves as a yearly summary of department data, statistical information...
What's wrong?
You have lost the Facebook feed or the...
Audio? Can you hear me now?
Audio?
Yeah, that's it.
It's close, close to it.
Okay, I'll start again. Thank you for the opportunity to present the 2019 Milford Police Department Annual Report. The report summarizes the yearly department data, statistical information, and metrics that allow us to measure the effectiveness of our deliverable services. My presentation tonight will focus on the critical functions of our operation, however, the full report is available on our webpage. The professional men and women of the Milford Police Department worked tirelessly in 2019 to maintain our greatest asset, public trust. Additionally, we continued our quest to provide contemporary policing faced upon best practices and high standards. Our mission, creed, and core values remain the cornerstone of our service, and we pride ourselves on doing the right thing at the right time, in the right way, and for the right reasons. We believe that policing is a partnership, and we work with some wonderful partners on some great projects. We had the opportunity to work with our counterparts in City Hall and City Council on new and exciting ways to make Milford a safe and enjoyable place to live, work, and play. Our new designated outdoor refreshment area has been very well received, and we expect the new golf cart ordinance to be a popular addition to our downtown area. We received lots of positive feedback on our new police cruiser design, which debuted in the Frontier Days Parade and was also featured at the Junior Police Academy Vehicle Day. We kicked off the back-to-school season with our friends Remote Wood, and we had a ball welcoming FC Cincinnati to Milford. Our focus on treating every member of the community with respect while taking advantage of every opportunity to connect with our residents is the foundation of our mission and one of the many reasons that Part I crimes have decreased for the seventh year in a row. As you'll see from this report, the results and hard work and dedication of my staff are undeniable. In 2019, our officers patrolled over 120,000 miles, received 36 hours of in-service training, and as you can see from this chart, our training team developed a balanced curriculum of classroom and practical training to keep our officers tactically proficient and well-versed in case law, criminal procedure, and de-escalation techniques. We wrote 6,885 reports, made 720 arrests, conducted 3,515 traffic stops, investigated 280 auto accidents, and issued 2,758 citations. If you'll notice on the graphic there, the direct relationship between traffic stops, represented by the red and green lines, and auto accidents represented by the blue line, you can see there is a direct impact between the two. You see during the months of May and June, when we had less traffic contacts, auto accidents spiked. We've had the same occurrence just in March this year. Any questions so far? Response to resistance, also referred to as use of force, is the highest liability function in our operation. Because it falls into the low-frequency, high-risk category, we consistently train officers on de-escalation tactics, case laws, and tactics for taking a resistant subject into custody as safely as possible. Whenever an officer uses force or displays a weapon, his or her actions are reviewed by at least two levels of command, and annually, I conduct an analysis to identify any patterns or trends that would indicate a need for a policy change or additional training. Last year, sworn officers arrested or detained 4,235 people. The nine times that we were forced to use force indicates that 99.975% of the time, our officers accomplished their mission without any use of force. This falls well within the FBI parameters of use of force involving 1% of all arrested or detained persons. The fact that 2/3 of our use-of-force incidents occurred on night shift is consistent with a staffing study, which revealed that 30% of the calls for service on night shift are two-unit runs. I found no consistent variable in terms of officer involved, suspect, location, or race that would indicate an identifiable trend or causative factors for concern. The following data was extracted from my annual analysis. There were no complaints filed as a result of a response to resistance. 44% involved a psychiatric emergency. All of the suspects were actively resisting as opposed to passive resistance. 89% of the incidents involved an assault on the officer. 89% of the suspects were Caucasian. 55% of the suspects were male. The average age was 38. 66% involved a suspect that was under the influence of either alcohol or drugs, and as I previously mentioned, 66% occurred on night shift. The only identifiable factor for concern is the level of violence, excuse me, our officers have encountered. This increase in violent crime has been observed countywide along with the resurgence of methamphetamine. The following two videos are examples of professionalism, discipline, and compassion. In this first video, we'll see Officers Mel and Bogan attempting to handcuff a suspect in a domestic violence offense. Despite the suspect's attempts to bite both officers, they showed pure professionalism and composure in using the absolute lowest level of force to effect the arrest. I've muted the audio because of the suspect's language, but you should know, in effort to gain compliance, the officers were reminding the suspect of how positive their past contacts with him had been. In this next video, it's a transport video that involves a suspect who had just violently assaulted Sergeant Kibbe and Officer Clark. The suspect, who had a felony warrant, nearly choked both officers unconscious during a four-minute struggle before being tased. The recorded conversation between the officer, Officer Brandon Clark, made me proud.
4A31, do you have additional charges?
31A firm, assault on PO, resisting arrest, currently en route to Claremont County Jail with him.
Okay, stand by.
Can you feel it now, buddy? Is it coming out?
Yeah.
Okay.
If I just scoot you a little to my left?
If you can, by all means, go ahead.
Oh, yeah. I, uh, listen, man, you're, hey, you, uh, you're, you're something else, man.
Why is that?
Why is that?
Yes, sir. What are you getting at, buddy?
Your demeanor, your character, your, uh, your moral compass, however, you know, you, uh, you got that thick skin, like you, uh, like you have empathy. And I don't even know why you would extend that to me after the way I just behaved and acted.
Because we're supposed to, Hassan.
I know that's hard to hear, could you guys understand that?
I think he was complimenting him, correct?
He was, he was complimenting his character, his demeanor, he said, "And I don't know why you extended that to me after the way I behaved," and Officer Clark said, "Because we're supposed to," and then called him by his first name. So, it made me very proud, Brandon got the shot out of the week for that, but that's exemplary policing, to get a compliment from somebody you just had a very violent struggle with, that's absolutely stellar. Any questions on response to resistance? Okay, moving on. Traffic pursuits are another high-risk, low-frequency practice and therefore must be closely scrutinized. Milford police officers may initiate an emergency vehicle pursuit when a law violator clearly exhibits the intent of avoiding arrest.
You might have to speak literally right into that microphone.
The power keeps going off, I think the batteries are getting low. Something changed. You want to change the batteries, then?
This is where we would technically go to commercial, but since we don't have any in the queue, can I tell everybody how nice it is to see everybody?
Yes.
Nice to see you.
As I was stating, Milford police officers may initiate an emergency vehicle pursuit whenever a law violator clearly exhibits the intention of avoiding arrest by using a vehicle to flee and elude the officer. However, a justified pursuit occurs only when the necessity of apprehension outweighs the level of danger created by the pursuit. An administrative review is completed by the officer supervisor after each pursuit to determine if the pursuit was within policy and to address equipment and training needs. The administrative review was forwarded to the Assistant Chief and me for final approval. In 2019, there were only two traffic pursuits, both of which were terminated by the pursuing officer. In fact, in the past two years, all pursuits have been terminated by the pursuing officers. The following video is an example of a disciplined officer making the right decision to terminate There's no audio with this one. This was Sergeant Lane, who clocked a vehicle at a high rate of speed, I don't remember the exact level, but I know it was very high. This is where Sergeant Lane turned off his lights and decided it was not worth it, in other words, the necessity for apprehension was not outweighed by the danger of the pursuit. So, it makes me very proud when the officers show good discretion like that. Are there any questions on traffic pursuits? Okay, the next area I'd like to talk about is public information. In effort to maintain public confidence, police actions and policy objectives are disclosed in a full and open manner. The department disseminates factual accounts of occurrences to the public through a variety of sources, including Nixle notifications, Facebook, and Raids Online Crime Mapping. Last year, we issued 25 Nixle advisories, over 150 Facebook posts, and we shared all of our incident reports on Raids Online, which is accessible on our webpage. Any questions about public information? One of the most important functions administered through my office is that of internal affairs. As a contemporary police agency, we engage in high liability activities with the corresponding need to maintain the integrity of our operations and ethical conduct of our members. It's our policy to investigate all complaints and allegations in a manner that will assure the community of prompt corrective action in the event of employee misconduct, while at the same time protecting our employees from unwarranted criticism pursuant to the proper discharge of their duties. In 2019, there were two investigations as a result of citizen complaints and six internal complaints that were initiated by a member of command staff. The low ratio of complaints compared to the thousands of public contacts initiated by department employees indicates an extremely low frequency of complaints. Any questions on internal affairs? A fundamental right guaranteed by both the U.S. and Ohio constitutions is the equal protection clause. Everyone, citizen and alien alike, is entitled to walk, drive, and move about in public free from police interference so long as they obey the law. Those who commit infractions must receive equal and fair treatment regardless of their race, color, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, physical handicap, religion, or other belief system. Our officers receive annual anti-bias training, and sergeants are tasked with daily monitoring of officer-initiated contacts to identify any unusual patterns that would indicate the presence of bias-based profiling. The annual review of our practices, procedures, and training showed no indication of impropriety, and the number of traffic citations and warnings issued in 2019 is representative of the demographics of our service population. Any questions on bias-based profiling? Okay, and finally, the annual report not only showcases our strengths, it also identifies areas where we could improve. Each year, we identify specific measurable goals that we strive as a team to achieve. Our goals for 2020 include broadening our community outreach efforts by recruiting a minimum of five residents to participate in the Citizens Police Academy and assigning an officer to serve as the Milford Methodist Church Youth Group Liaison. Our second goal is to improve our deliverable services to residents with special needs by partnering with Women Helping Women to implement their divert program, that's the Domestic Violence Enhanced Response Team, and we also plan to add autism sensory bags to our marked patrol fleet. And our final goal is reducing auto accidents on Main Street. We will do that by coordinating with our Public Works Department to address roadway improvements, deploying speed signs, and increasing patrols. This concludes my annual presentation, if you have any questions, I can be reached by telephone or email at jmills@milfordohio.org, where I'm happy to take any questions from Council now.
Anybody have any questions?
I just have a comment, number of the question, excellent report, Chief, really appreciate seeing, especially when you dive down into it individually, there's a lot of data for all of us to look at. I'd like to just personally thank the officers for their diligence during this stay-at-home order, I've definitely noticed a lot more patrols and stuff downtown on the Main Street where the businesses might not be there because they are at home, and we actually, at my business, had left our door unlocked and it blew open, and so officers actually came and walked the place and then got ahold of us to lock it, so I thought that was really excellent, and thank you.
Thank you, I'll relay that.
Chief, that was fantastic, I've seen a lot of your annual reports, but you clearly hit this one out of the park, we love the audios, the presentation, that was an excellent report.
Thank you, Mayor.
You could just maybe dub in like the background noise for cops, bad boys during some of those videos?
Next year, yeah.
Because that was what was going through my head, we were watching that pursuit, right? We were all thinking it, I'm just the one saying it, the same. Excellent, excellent report.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank for your staff too as well. Okay, so next on the agenda is proceedings, I need a motion, or, let's see, proceedings from the minutes from the March 3rd, 2020, March 18th, so I need a motion to approve the minutes, we'll do them one at a time, from the March 3rd meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Moving on to financial statements, because this is just a motion to receive, I believe we can do these together, I just need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the February and the March finance reports.
So moved. Second. Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, this takes us to our first and only committee reports, Administrative Services Vice Mayor Evans.
Thank you, Mayor Velardo, we met back on March 9th, which seems like forever ago, the meeting was called to order at 4:34. Present were myself, Kim Chamberlain, and Sandy Russell, staff members Michael Doss, Assistant City Manager Pam Holbrook, and Administrative Assistant Jackie Bain. Visitors were Elizabeth Fields, Kathleen Ryan, Wendy Moller, Paul Cutler, Jay Stewart, and Tim Casto. We approved the minutes from the February 11th, 2020 Administrative Services meeting. Ms. Chamberlain made the motion to approve, and it was seconded by Ms. Russell. The first topic was a zoning code update project. Three firms were present to review and discuss about, have a discussion about what each firm could do as far as a zoning code update and their process within a 12-month period. The first firm was Manley Burke McBride Dale Clarion. From that firm, Elizabeth Fields, the AICP planner, and Cincinnati, Ohio Attorney Kathleen Ryan presented their team's information to the committee. Next to present their overview of the process to the committee was Compass Point Planning and Jacobs, Wendy Moller, FAICP, and Paul Cutler, Senior Community Planner with Jacobs. And then the last firm to present was Jay Stewart and Tim Casto, they present their information, represent the team from Stewart Land Use and Cleanagers. After lengthy discussion with the committee, Assistant City Manager Pam Holbrook asked if the committee would like to make a recommendation at this meeting to keep the project moving. The committee liked the expertise of the Manley Burke team and that they would give a fresh perspective to the project. Each group brought something different to the committee, but the committee would like to go with the Manley Burke McBride Dale Clarion team, and they made a recommendation to sign a future contract with Manley Burke McBride Dale Clarion upon the review and approval of the Law Director. The next topic was the Claremont Small Business Development Center Service Agreement. City Manager Michael Doss presented information to the committee regarding proposal between the Claremont County Small Business Development Center and the City of Milford to provide business and economic support services for the city. Mr. Doss explained that the Claremont Small Business Development Center is a creation of U.S. Small Business Administration, an individual, James Buckner, would provide technical support for small businesses, such as consultations, assist with startup businesses, providing coaching to individuals wanting to create a small business, help with job planning, credit assistance with them, and assist with small business applications. They would help the individuals in a variety of measures. The SBDC would be a client of the city, the city would utilize the SBDC to go to these small businesses or potential small businesses in Milford and assist them with services. The scope of services would consist of three program sessions costing $2,000, per hour cost would be $50, which we would pay that individual to set up shop at City Hall to provide consultation services to small businesses. Mr. Doss recommends that Mr. Buckner come in and make a presentation to the committee regarding the specific services that he would provide with his partnership with the city. We would also ask, when he's here, about the hourly fee, they're going to, at some point, we'll schedule a meeting with Mr. Buckner to come before the committee. The last topic was the various City Hall lease agreements. Mr. Doss spoke about the leases with Control Bionics, Milford Miami Township Chamber of Commerce, and CDPS Incorporated. The Control Bionics lease is now tiered over three years, improvements will be made in the first year, carpet will be replaced and add some additional offices to the space, and the cost would be on them. The company, the committee agreed to, that the leases looked okay and to proceed with the agreements. The committee, are we going to do the motion tonight?
Yeah.
The committee agreed to make a motion authorizing the Law Director to draft an ordinance authorizing the city manager to sign lease agreements with Control Bionics, Milford Miami Township Chamber of Commerce, and CDPS Incorporated. With no further business, the meeting adjourned at 6:07 PM with a motion by myself and seconded by Ms. Russell, all agreed.
Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't stop for our motion. It just kept on going.
You were waiting.
It's been a long time since we've had a meeting.
And Ms. Chamberlain, did you second?
I seconded, yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Evans.
City Manager report, Michael Doss?
Hi, everyone, how's everyone? It's a bit of a different view back here. My presentation tonight is basically just a response, the City of Milford's response to COVID-19 and our operations. I have to apologize, I don't have any cool videos of us social distancing like Chief Mills, so you'll just have to just deal with some verbiage here. It's really important to talk about declarations, there's been a lot of declarations at the federal government level and specifically with the state of Ohio, but here's, I feel some pertinent declarations just to give Council and our citizens an idea and understanding of exactly how quickly the City of Milford responded as this pandemic was kicking up within our nation, within our state. On March 9th of 2020, the state of Ohio did an emergency declaration. That is important because just eight days later, on March 17th, the City of Milford implemented our restricted operations, and we'll go into those restricted operations in a moment, but essentially, we were shutting things down and making some pretty quick decisions, and I feel the right decisions, of how we were going to deal with our operations and with our employees. Our main goal, and this continues to be our main goal throughout this process, is to keep our city employees safe and healthy while maintaining continuity in public services in an assured, ineffective, and efficient manner. That is important, that is a standard that we still adhere to today as this pandemic is still making its way throughout the state and our community, but that was our goal, keep our employees safe, keep our employees healthy, and try not to disrupt any of the public services that we provide to our citizens. As part of our March 17th implementing restrictions in our... Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Evans. City Manager Report, Michael Doss?
Hi, everyone. How's everyone? It's a bit of a different view back here. My presentation tonight is basically just a response, the city of Milford's response to COVID-19 and our operations. I have to apologize, I don't have any cool videos of us social distancing like Chief Mills, so you'll just have to just deal with some, some verbiage here. It's really important to talk about declarations. There's been a lot of declarations at the federal government level and specifically with the state of Ohio, but these are, I feel, some pertinent declarations just to give council and our citizens an idea and understanding of exactly how quickly the City of Milford responded as, as this pandemic was kicking up within our nation, within our state. On March 9th of 2020, the state of Ohio did an emergency declaration. That is important because just eight days later, on March 17th, the City of Milford implemented our restricted operations. And we'll go into those restricted operations in a moment, but essentially, we were shutting things down and making some pretty quick decisions, and I feel the right decisions, of how we were going to deal with our operations and with our employees. Our main goal, and this continues to be our main goal throughout this process, is to keep our city employees safe and healthy while maintaining continuity in public services in an assured, ineffective, and efficient manner. That is important. That is a standard that we still adhere to today as this pandemic is still making its way throughout the state and our community. But that was our goal, keep our employees safe, keep our employees healthy, and try not to disrupt any of the public services that we provide to our citizens. As part of our March 17th implementing restrictions in our operations, all of our city lobbies were closed immediately to the public. Our utility and tax collections went to only an online payment, payment by phone, which is something new that we're just doing temporarily during, during the pandemic, and we also had a drop-off box just outside in the hallway of City Hall. Some other important things that I mentioned, our Public Works Department was split into two working and rotating shifts. We had concerns, especially with our water and sewer departments, because it's our critical infrastructure to our community. We wanted to make sure that we, we at least had half of our staff theoretically that could be healthy. If, if half of the city went down with, with COVID-19, the other half could pick back up and continue to main this critical infrastructure services. At that time, we were also still concerned about snow removal because we were still in March, so we wanted to make sure that we were still able to provide that service in possibly the worst-case scenario. And, and that actually is still going on today. I'll talk a little bit, Mayor, about us moving forward as we get out of April and get into May. All departments were placed on a purchase order freeze, and that is working well. They continue to still stay on that freeze, and we are only authorizing emergency purchases only. On March 18th, a day after we fundamentally changed our operations, City Council declared a state of emergency. And then on March the 22nd, roughly five days after the city took bold initiatives, Ohio issued their stay-at-home order. So this is very important. In my communication a lot with other city managers, other township administrators in the greater northern Kentucky, greater Cincinnati area, we were on top of this. We were very proactive with a lot of communities. A lot of the policies that we'll talk about a little bit later on that we created were spread, were spread out to other, other municipalities. So something to be very proud of, that, that Milford was taking a proactive approach early on as this pandemic was, was winding its way through the state. Public information. The city used a lot and continues to use a lot of social media and our city website. We were very proactive, especially on our social media, with getting small business assistance for our business community. This includes the payroll protection program and SBA loans, getting that information out there because we have a lot of people that follow our Facebook that are on our website daily, getting that information for our businesses, providing them in the right directions. Our COVID-19 statistical information, we provided state statistics, continue to provide state statistics, and also information from the Claremont County Board of Health. There is actually something that you can go on, on our website and look at a real-time, up-to-date map through Claremont, through Claremont County GIS of the cases that are in Claremont County and the other 87 counties in the state of Ohio, how many cases, how many have cleared, and fortunately, how many deaths have occurred. And that feature is on our website. We had a lot of shares and a lot of interest in that. We also shared some Ohio primary election information. There's a link to the Claremont County Board of Education, Board of Elections, not Board of Education, where you can get a form to download for absentee ballots. I believe the deadline for that is Saturday, so trying to get your information out, but there's, there's a link on there for our citizens to go download that application, and there's, there's step-by-step instructions with that link of, of what they need to do if they want to participate in the primary election. Public safety and health information, Chief Baird, Chief Mills, and myself, they were in contact with Hamilton County and Claremont County EMA in providing the, the latest information as it relates to COVID-19 and, and health issues and concerns in both counties in, in our region. And also, in the midst of all this pandemic, on April 8th, we did sustain some storm damage. We were able to provide cleanup information to our citizens. And also, Mayor Velardo, Chief Mills, Chief Baird, and myself held three Facebook Live informational sessions related to COVID-19 and city operations and services. We had a lot of participation and a lot of individuals from the community that were viewing that, and we got a lot of great feedback. And I missed the bunny. We also had a bunny that, that made a special appearance in there. And those were received very well. It may be something that, in the future, moving forward, you know, it's something to look at as, as far as just getting information out, general information out, aside from what we're being impacted by COVID-19. Excuse me. Daily operations, just want to let you know that there were some city construction projects that were going on, and one that continues to go on during this, during this pandemic. It was very important for us to, to, to provide this public face, again, keeping back to our mission and our main goal that I presented earlier of having sustainable continuity in the city services and what we provided. So our citizens were able to get some relief in showing that, you know, we're still in business, we're still doing things for the community. We did contract with Adlita Construction. They have completed the U.S. 50 Concrete and Catch Basin Project. Bearcat Construction is in the final phases of completing the new Riverside Park Shelter. Our Public Works maintained a regular brush collection schedule. Public Works maintained a pothole repair schedule. Our Public Works Department maintained a regular general maintenance schedule. This includes mowing and landscaping, vehicle maintenance, and water and wastewater testing. And in response to the 2000, the, the April 8th, 2020 storm, I'm proud to say that we were able to operate in our split shifts and do collaboration in those operations and still maintain social distancing. So we had to bring individuals the night of April 8th, the morning of April 9th, to deal with storm cleanup. And I'm very proud to say with Ed Hackmeister's leadership and, and our crews, they knew what to do. So we had social distancing, so our split shift crews, one crew was working one side of town, the other was working the other, and they were able to successfully still provide that service, again, keeping with our goals that we set forth when we changed these operations back on March 17. Administration and Finance, some internal operations that are going on, our planning and zoning items were all performed online via email and set up through phone conferences. Building permits were coordinated with NIC. That's the company that we, we contract with to do our inspections and also our contracted city engineer. Utility and tax payments were made telephonically, online, or by mail, the dropbox I mentioned to out, out, just outside of City Hall's lobby. Utility shut-offs were temporarily suspended. They continue to be suspended. We have not lifted that. City income tax was postponed until July 15th. That follows the federal and state mandates as well. One thing that we, we did a little different was we, with our City Hall personnel, we authorized split shifts for those individuals, including the Assistant City Manager, the Clerk of Council, and our Code Enforcement Officer. And we also incorporated the, the use of telework through a telework policy for some of our Administrative and Finance Department personnel, and they're using that now. And again, how that works is when they're on their split shifts and they're not at City Hall, we have hooked them up with a VPN so they can go into our system and, and do work while, while, while they're at their home or while they're not in the office. So again, keeping up with the continuity of, of maintaining our, our city services that our citizens and council have come to expect. Our COVID-19 financial impact, I've asked our Finance Director, Pat Worthlin, to work on a financial forecast. The city does anticipate revenue shortfalls in the following areas. Utilities, which is our water, sewer, stormwater, and garbage collection. Our city income tax, specifically our second and third quarter, we're in second quarter right now. Even if this machine kicks up again, we do anticipate low city income tax revenues for quarter number three as well, hopefully with some sustainability in quarter four, which would be October, November, and December of this year. City police citations and fees, there, there's been impact to that and a shortage. Hotel lodging tax, and of course, our gasoline tax. As our gasoline prices are going down, our taxes are going down on that. So, so we're, we're seeing a pretty significant shortfall there as well. These will impact our current operations. These will impact personnel. This is going to impact the remainder of our 2020 planned capital improvements that are not already funded. And unfortunately, this is going to bleed over into our 2021 budget when we go to work on that in the fall. Programs and events, these are some things that are important. I've asked to suspend the tree rebate program. That's been temporarily suspended. Again, some of the cuts as we, as we go through and we focus on our, our financial forecasting. Our small business incentive program has also been temporarily suspended. If you're familiar with that program, that essentially provides facade improvements, some external and a little bit of internal improvements for businesses. That program has been suspended. And we are keeping our eye on Sparks in the Park. That is still scheduled for July 3rd of 2020, and it's still on schedule. As the state opens back up, as we look internally, if there's a second wave, certainly we'll make a determination for canceling that event. If there's any determination with that, that'll be made in early June. Keeping our eyes on that of importance because again, if, if the timing and if everything works out well, July 3rd, that July 4th weekend could be a very busy weekend where a lot of people are wanting to get out of the house. And typically, for Sparks, we have about 5,000 people, and we, we could have 7,500 to 10,000 people or more. So we're very cognizant of, you know, what is social distancing? Is that still in place? Or how does that look a couple months from now? But as of right now, it's still on schedule, but always with everything subject to change. Excuse me. Future operations, moving forward, our planning and zoning meetings will commence tomorrow, April 22nd. Pam has, Pam has something for planning commission. Our Public Works Department, as I mentioned earlier, their split shifts will dissolve on May the 4th. So this will dissolve on May 4th. Those teams will replace split shifts, and we will conduct a coordinated and divided operation throughout the city, much like what we were experiencing with the storm we had on April 8th. So that will be dissolved. Merrick's Court will commence in early May of 2020. The City Hall lobbies will remain closed at least until June 1st, tentatively. Again, we want to see if there's a surge or anything like that, so those will remain closed. Again, citizens and businesses will have the ability to pay their utilities and pay their taxes telephonically, online, or through the mail dropbox option, again, at the city hallway. Also, our city playground equipment and restroom room facilities will remain closed until June 1st, and that is tentative as well. Again, we're just, we're playing this as we go along and following a little bit of the federal and state lead certainly on that. To kind of end a little bit on a bright note, again, continuity of service and, and trying to maintain some sense of normalcy while everything is going on, I do want to report, of course, on some economic development. The Sycamore Whiskey Distillery development at the old Millcroft, that is still on schedule for a November 2020 opening. They are still doing full construction down there, and it's on schedule, so that's good news. True Hotel out on Chamber Drive is still on schedule as well for a spring opening in 2021. Taco Bell Development, those plans were approved for Chamber Drive. The Little Miami Event Center, we did receive some, some conceptual drawings from that, but that has a process that it has to go through, and Pam Holbrook is working on that with the neighborhood meeting as well. And then we just recently received plans for the Milford South residential proposed development for water and sewer for Phase 1 of that project. Excuse me. In closing, I do want to make some remarks. I apologize, I'm going to read these, but these are written for me and, and truly from the heart. Since the City of Milford's emergency declaration over a month ago, city staff and personnel have worked diligently to maintain balance and continuity of city services while protecting the health of our employees and their family. The city's quick action in adjusting service delivery and shutting down public facilities were necessary actions. The City of Milford, our citizens and businesses were able to adapt and continue to adapt to an ever-changing environment. The city was acutely aware of federal and state guidelines, orders, and laws, and worked in concert to assure compliance with our employees, residences, and businesses in our community. City staff and personnel continue to monitor and track all items of expenses potentially eligible for reimbursement under various federal relief programs. Our city leadership anticipates the backing, our city leadership appreciates, I'm sorry, the backing and support of Mayor Velardo, Vice Mayor Evans, and all of City Council in allowing several adjustments to city operations that we have all, quite frankly, taken for granted in the past. Although some of these actions were not popular or were unpleasant, I am confident that we played our part in helping slow the spread in our community. My city staff and personnel never skipped a beat in service delivery, even in the face of a pandemic and a severe and damaging storm on April 8th. Thank you to Chief Mills and Chief Baird for continuing to keep our community safe. Thank you to Joe Castile and Dave Walker for providing critical and water services in their departments. Thank you to Ed Hackmeister and his department for keeping our community clean, well-maintained, and remaining the envy of our neighbors in the greater Cincinnati area. Thank you to Pam Holbrook for continuing to support our efforts to progress this community even through this pandemic. And finally, thank you to Pat Worthlin, our Finance Director, for her strength in assisting with developing policy, as well as being tasked with one of the most difficult jobs in navigating city finances through this great time of uncertainty. My staff looks forward to the day when normalcy will return to our great city, a time when our businesses can reopen their doors, our citizens can enjoy a lazy day of shopping, strolling down Main Street, our children and some adults playing in our parks, riding on our trails, and kayaking down the Little Miami River, as we go back to the prosperity we were so blessed to be experiencing prior to this great time in our city's history. Until then, as City Manager of Milford, I can assure our City Council and the Milford residents that our staff and personnel stand at the ready together to adapt and overcome, and this together, stronger together. Thank you.
I think that deserves a round of applause.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Just thank you for everything. It's, it's been a pleasure watching everything just go so smoothly.
Thank you. Again, we, we truly appreciate it. It's, it's, it's been a slog at some times, but hopefully there's light at the end of the tunnel.
You guys have done a great job with the storm in the process and just a great job.
It was definitely a one-two punch, but it was just great how everybody is just programmed, ready to go and do their jobs, taking those necessary precautions. It was, it was really a truly proud moment for myself, a city manager, seeing, seeing how all of that, and, and seeing Chief, Chief Baird and Chief Mills in their departments and everybody just pulling together and still respecting that distancing and getting things done. Very, very proud moment.
You've done a great job. You've been responsive and attentive, all of you have. Chief Baird, Chief Mills, all, everybody has just been extremely awesome in this awful situation that we're all found, found ourselves in, so thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Chief Baird, you've got some really big shoes to follow. Oh, Chief Mills, did you have another presentation you wanted to make? I'm sorry. Chief Mills?
I do, just a brief review of the March monthly report. All sworn members were requalified on firearms and our department use-of-force directives. Officer Yerry attended the monthly Special Response Team training. Officer Dennis attended the monthly Hamilton County Police Association Dive Team training. And Officer Wilson went to career survival for female officers in law enforcement. Couple administrative items, as Mr. Doss touched on, several COVID-19 slash social distancing measures were implemented, including the closure of our lobby, issuing PPE to all members, stocking every vehicle and workstation with sanitizing products, taking non-emergency reports over the telephone, and changing shift briefing to an electronic email are all measures we took during the month of March. In terms of community relations, the AMR program completed just one shift. They temporarily suspended that operation because of COVID-19. I participated in two, actually three, two during the month of March, so Facebook Live videos. DK Nails donated unused PPE to the department, as you may recall from one of those Facebook Live videos. And I attended the First Responders Chili Challenge at the American Legion. Mayor Velardo was one of our celebrity judges, where Officer Heller entry finished third-place runner-up, so fourth place, but it was really stiff competition there.
There was a lot of chili.
Yeah, there was. Good turnout. And we had 14 Facebook posts during the month of March. That concludes my March report, unless you have any questions?
Thank you, sir. Chief Baird, how are you this evening?
Wait a minute, I have to come to the microphone. I don't want to get in trouble. I'm fine, thank you very much. And I also was not going to touch the podium so I don't get yelled at by the, by the Facebook viewers, but a few things, I want to assure the council that we have, as a department, been very much in connection, in contact with and working lockstep, not only with the city departments and Michael's leadership, but in addition to that, the 15 other Claremont County Fire Departments and the Eastern Hamilton County Fire Departments that we work with regularly, much of the, the, the fire station-level policies we've made, temporary policies and, and other practices, we've done generally in lockstep. There may be some slight variations from station to station, department to department, but for the most part, we've, we've tried to do things the same. And the reason is, I want to remind you that, you know, I don't, I can't put a percentage on it, but there is a large number of firefighters and EMTs and paramedics who work for multiple fire departments. They may have two or three part-time jobs at multiple employers, with multiple employers, or full-time, like at my place, and then part-time somewhere else. So the worst thing that we
So the worst thing that we could do in a situation like this is have 16 different Claremont County Departments doing 16 different things. So we've been, as a chief's group, and I have been fortunate to be an officer in that group for many, many years, but our Claremont Chiefs and also our Eastern Hamilton County Fire Chiefs work group, we've been meeting very regularly to make sure that we're all decision-making together and trying to, timing being the same, so that the policies change at the stations at the same time. And that's been a real help, in addition to the amount of resources that that's brought to us as far as physical resources, as well as policy ideas and other things, as Michael referred to as well. So just a little bit about the health of the department, we have, we're in great shape. We've been, knock on wood, I'm not allowed to touch the lectern here, but we've been very fortunate that we have not had any incidents involving significant lost time. We had a couple of suspicious incidents that we had people off for a few days for, but they were not, they turned out to be not COVID-type issues. It was just more precautionary, if you're sick, don't come to work, kind of things. We have a limited number of official cases in the city of Milford, and we're thankful for that. Our employees are taking all precautions necessary, and we are also, our 911 system, 911 operators by their computer questioning are triaging for potential concerning types of runs where our employees need to take further personal protective action. So we have everything in place we possibly can, I believe, to protect our employees while they're working daily. What we have missed greatly is the ability to get out and do all of the public outreach that we do. We've already missed a chair volleyball with one of the SIM complexes. We've had a couple of other activities that we normally do this time of the year that have been canceled, unfortunately. But we've had quite a large presence on social media. We've upped the game there a little bit. Proud to say we've had a couple of posts. Unfortunately, it was related to Officer Grant from Springdale's, her procession, her funeral procession. But the video that one of our part-time employees who attended the processional in our truck shot a real quick video of all of the police cruisers parked along the road in, and it was just amazing. That post, I guess, would be termed somewhat viral. It had over 500,000 reach, and I'm thinking was up in the neighborhood of about 100,000 video views. By far, by about 450,000, the largest post that we've ever had. So that was a little scary, quite frankly. I've never had one do that before. But we really have upped our game and tried to put supportive stuff on. And, you know, last night, they posted a video of the fire truck sitting out in front of the station at 8:20 PM, kind of joining along with what was, I guess, a social media-initiated thing to have the lights on for 20 minutes in recognition of the seniors who will have their senior year affected dramatically by what's going on. So that was really good. So we've reached out in other ways, and our community's been great to us. I think Chief Mills would probably echo the fact that we've had a tremendous amount of food and donated supplies, so much that I can't even keep up with it anymore, come into the station. And I just want to say to our community, we really appreciate that. We always do, and it was just amazing. So a few more things, the Easter Bunny, that was a huge hit. We were glad to be a part of that, and it was just, it was well-received, and I think it was at the right time. I love to say it was my idea. Ms. Evans knows who the idea came from.
My neighbor Joy.
Her neighbor.
That was her idea.
But we were glad to run with it. So it was great, and I think the community was very receptive to that. It was a beautiful day to be out there. A couple of things more, I've attached to my report a general order that my employees, it's number five now. But if you want to know what we've done as a department, how much we've changed in reaction to the pandemic, the general order is all of the changes from norm for us that our employees have had to grasp and react to. And I think that'll give you kind of an idea, and it'll be very similar to what Chief Mills' department, they've done very much the same thing. That'll give you some ideas of how much we've had to change our daily operation and some of the things that have happened as a result of the pandemic. A few more things, and I'll be off, be out of here. Our runs are down, and throughout southwest Ohio, that seems to be the trend, that EMS runs right now are down. Ours are not down significantly, but they are noticeably lower than what they should be. There's a lot of speculation about why that is, but I think it probably ties to the fact that people who are trying to avoid going to the hospital at all cost, because they're afraid of contracting the virus potentially in the hospital setting. My word to our public is, I understand, but don't allow yourself to become so sick and putting off what you know should be a trip to the hospital for fear of going to the hospital. The hospitals are going to great measures to make the facilities clean and safe, and what I would hate is for somebody to put off chest pains or a shortness of breath situation or something that has clearly progressively gotten worse for them, and then something really major happen. So don't be afraid to go to the hospital if you need to. And that's the takeaway that I'd like to close with tonight. Do you have any questions for me in the department? Thank you very much. I apologize for taking so much time, but thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you for all the first responders out there. Thank you for all that you do. Okay. Next on the agenda is community development report. If you look in your packet of information, you will see a report given to you by Assistant City Manager Pam Holbrook. You can take some time to review that unless you already have any questions. We can address those. If not, Pam is always available for questions or comments with regards to her report. Anybody have anything they want to add on that now? That takes us to council comments. Do we have any comments from our council colleagues?
I had to second what you said earlier, Mayor, to Michael about how excellent a job the city is doing. It's definitely been seen and commented on by many of our citizens. Special thanks to Ed and really the whole service crew, especially after the storm. Within 20 minutes, they were on Main Street removing a tree. So right after the storm passed through, they were right there, getting to work in the middle of the night, and so it's really appreciated by all of us here in the community.
I just want to address the Milford High School seniors. I meant to do that in my opening, and I inadvertently forgot to mention them. Vice Mayor Evans had a great idea of some kind of a collaboration that we could do with the schools to acknowledge the seniors. I mean, it would just be awful. It's awful for the parents, it's awful for the seniors to not get to have their spring sports, their proms, their bicycle ride, I mean, the infamous bicycle ride down Wolf Pen Pleasant Hill Road, and of course, graduation. So Lisa was kind enough to think outside the box, and we have Milford Maine available, of course. So with Lisa's permission and staff's permission, I have reached out to Chris Hamm today and just offered it up in some sort of way that they could possibly put the photos of the seniors on stakes and put them out there with some acknowledgement, or it's not worked out at all, but I just thought we would offer that.
Banner or something.
Banner or something to them. If they wanted to make some kind of a display on behalf of their seniors, we would work with them and try to figure something out there. So I thought that was a great idea, Lisa.
I think it's a neat focal point of the city, so everybody driving by would see all the seniors and see the acknowledgement.
Yeah, that was a great idea.
It's a great idea.
I mean, also, maybe, wouldn't it be hard to do like a PowerPoint with the seniors' picture, just like they would be for a graduation ceremony that would be put together?
We were trying to just think of something they could put in the.
No, that physically too, I agree that too, but the amount of people who use social media, just like we did an Easter video.
Yeah.
Just like you would read off the names of all the kids who would be at a graduation.
I think the school is working on somehow to handle the graduation. Yeah. But yeah, whatever we need to do with, to help them, to collaborate with them, to show our appreciation and, what do you say about that, right? Does anybody else have anything else? As far as Facebook comments go, I don't know about you guys, I've been kind of trying to keep an eye on things. I'm seeing a lot of positive comments when Chief Jamie Mills was talking, he might be the fan favorite tonight. So if I'm right on that, you guys can hit that like or heart button, because our departments truly are amazing. I didn't see any questions that came out per se. Did anybody else see a question that we need to address?
I lost my feed, but no, I didn't.
There is.
That maybe Chief Mills might be able to, somebody was asking about her granddaughter needing a driving test. When can she?
Yeah. Yeah, I saw that question too, Kim. That would be something that would be covered by the governor's order for the BMV when they're going to reopen.
Yeah.
See, that's unfortunately, that's something we could answer. That was the only question I saw.
There's just another comment here. I don't know if it was on the live, but someone was saying that the crosswalk, they used the word horrible in front of Jesse's. This says it needs flashing lights on it because people still don't stop. That was a comment I see here.
Mr. Doss? You want to respond to the crosswalk question?
Yes, I will. Actually, we're looking at some solar lighting to put there. I mean, that crosswalk is a little bit more identified than some of the crosswalks because of the stamping that we did there as well. But unfortunately, I don't think that any signage is going to work. We're going to have to get something that is going to flash and identify that as well. I also do want to speak on crosswalks downtown. We do have, actually, in our possession now, we ordered some of those collapsible crosswalks that you've seen in maybe some other municipalities. So we do have those right now. Selfishly, we're kind of holding off a little bit until they pave US 50. Actually, I have a pre-construction meeting with ODOT tomorrow and the contractors who will be doing that project. Again, we'll have a better understanding of when that project will start this summer. We cut into the road just a little bit to mount those in there, and we don't want to, trying to hold off. I know that some council members want to see those. We do have those purchased. We're just going to hold off until the asphalt, if we can. But we've looked at identifying specifically on that part by Jesse's of doing some type of a solar flashing, flashing light there that would be instituted by a push of a button or something that would light up in both ways to alert those drivers, because it is a little bit of a problematic area, I understand.
Paula, I appreciate your answer. That was from Paula. And then the other, only one I see here on Facebook is someone is commenting on wanting speed bumps on Crestview. I don't know specific the situation to that, but there.
That's a process.
That is a process.
That's just not a pull the trigger, but duly noted, and we will definitely respond to her. Anybody have anything else?
Do we need to talk about these meetings, or do we need to make a motion to approve these summer meetings?
Yes, we do. Where's mine? Yeah, thank you for that. So we typically, in the summer, go to one meeting a month in June, July, and August. We have recommended the dates of June 16th, July 21st, and August 18th. If everybody could check calendars now or later and let us know. If you have already done that and we're good with those dates, that makes Jackie's life a whole lot easier.
I'm good with them. I don't know anybody else.
I'm good.
I might have a baby in the June.
You might? You could have a baby.
I might be missing that one.
We might, we'll excuse you.
Might excuse you.
Appreciate it.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good stuff. Okay, so that takes us right to new business. We only have one ordinance tonight. Our law director is not with us this evening, so I believe our city manager, Michael Doss, is going to be reading ordinance 20-2020. Do you have a copy of it, sir, or do you need it?
Yes. Real quick, I didn't mention that in my presentation, but we're going to need an Administrative Services Committee meeting between now and the next scheduled meeting, which I think is May 4th or 5th. So I'll be getting with the.
I'm available.
Yeah. Okay. Mike Manier's spot here, no pressure. This is ordinance 20-20, an ordinance authorizing the renewal of lease agreements with CDPS Inc., the Milford Miami Township Chamber of Commerce and Control Bionics. Now therefore, being ordained by the council of the municipality of Milford, Ohio, Section 1, the council of the city of Milford hereby authorizes the city manager to enter into and execute lease agreements with CDPS Inc., the Milford Miami Township Chamber of Commerce and Control Bionics for office space in the municipal building. The terms and conditions of each of the lease agreements are fully incorporated herein, as if fully rewritten herein pursuant to and in accordance with Section 12.03 of the Milford City Charter. Section 2 pursuant to, in accordance with Section 12.05 of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall be effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Move to suspend the rules and read by title only.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Redman?
Yes.
Ms. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Cue ordinance 20-20-20, an ordinance authorizing the renewal of lease agreements with CDPS Inc., the Milford Miami Township Chamber of Commerce and Control Bionics.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Redman?
Yes.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Velardo?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Doss. Before I entertain a motion to adjourn, it has been pointed out to me that we need to make an announcement with regards to Frontier Days. Do you want to do the honors?
It has been canceled, very sadly. They are, I think, in the works of trying to put something else together, maybe in conjunction with street eats, so they might like amp up street eats and kind of combine the two or something later in the year. So.
And I suppose.
On the chamber website, I guess.
Okay, yes. And with regards to the Memorial Day Parade, do we have any information on that at all?
You know, I have not talked to Janet Cooper about that. I think we haven't done anything yet. Maybe hopefully we could still do something. I don't know, we haven't crossed our fingers, so we can still do something that day.
So more information to come with regards to Memorial Day.
Was the only other event coming up that makers mark? I'm sure that was.
That was canceled.
That was canceled, yeah.
Yeah.
So the next thing would be Sparks.
Sparks.
Yeah.
Yeah. I hope we're able to figure out something for Memorial Day. That's always a special weekend, so I hope that works out, but we really don't know.
Even if it has to be on a smaller scale or something, maybe we can do something.
Yeah. Okay. So if nobody has anything further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Redman?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Everybody be safe, keep washing hands, keep that social distance, keep supporting our restaurants, and we'll see you next month.